In all the years of World War I.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi Dennis, how are you?
Wonderful, how are you?
Not bad, hanging in there, you know?
It's freezing here.
Yeah, it's coming, it's coming.
Fifty degrees, I think, on Wednesday.
Oh, boy, good, let's melt all this stuff away.
You know, I'm gonna be sad to see it go, I was up skiing this morning up at Great Brook.
Oh, yeah?
And I met a guy that I row with on the river, and we're just talking about rowing, but I was hoping to get another two weeks skiing, because I'm not gonna be rowing anytime soon.
Oh, because of your hip thing?
The river is cold.
Oh, okay. I thought you were looking for, I was thinking, I was thinking ahead, thinking of the springtime, you know?
I know, I know. No, my knee's great.
My knee, yes, I keep forgetting, I'm sorry, Dennis, I keep. I guess not, I didn't have those issues yet, not thought would.
This meeting snuck up on me, I didn't realize that we were two weeks already gone by.
Yeah, I mean, it went by very quick, so.
It did. It was that whole Valentine's Day thing in between.
And President's Day, and the vacation, vacation week, and all that.
Yeah.
Fran, are you doing the meeting, or is Dylan?
I'm doing it tonight.
Okay, I see Dylan online, so.
Yes, he's, he's also here.
Guys, hear me, here, Lorenzo Arpini?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just making sure everything's working.
Yep.
We just have one member that's not able to make it tonight.
Yes. George is logging in now.
He was on TV this morning.
George was?
Monday mornings, there's the star.
There he goes, all decked out.
There's the star, hi, George.
Hello. Were you talking about me?
You bring sanity to that show, glad you're on it.
I didn't see it, I'm sorry, I missed it, George.
Oh, my God, they tried, yeah, it's, uh, it's funny, it's funny.
Tricky, it's tricky.
It is, it is. You watch that guy often?
You know, as long as I can stand it, Mondays are the best day of the week for it, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Other days, not so much.
I used, yeah, I used to go on Tuesdays, you know, back before pandemic, I worked one day from, one day a week from home, so I would, you know, since I'm working home, you know, on Tuesdays, I'd go, because it's easy just to drive home and log in. Since we've been home, I, yeah, Mondays are much better.
It seems like a good crowd on Mondays, just so you know, so I would stick with Mondays if I were you. Anyway.
They always, they always try to trap me, when are you gonna run, when are you gonna run?
Don't fall for it, George.
No, no, no.
At least not yet.
I know, I declared already, last month, I am not, I'm not, I'm not in the game this year.
Plenty of time, plenty of time, come on, you're only, what, 26, 27?
Yeah, just about.
Yeah.
Hey, Dennis, you see, I had to step up my game, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It shows, it shows, let's see how the rest of them do tonight.
Try as we might, George, we can't, we can't beat Dennis' style, you know? It's good to try.
I know, I know.
I don't, maybe one of these days, we'll catch him when he's just coming off the river, off of rowing off the river or something, and, you know.
So my rowing outfit has a bowtie also.
Okay.
No, I'm kidding. They make them, but I don't have one.
Oh, goodness.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
How's everyone?
A bad for Monday. Hi, Dan.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Good evening.
So, Mr. Chairman, yeah, we got Dennis, myself, and number Proco are on the line right now, and Dan's on the line, so, I don't know if Mark's here yet, but.
Yes, I am.
He is, okay, good.
Oh, good.
And we got, um, Robert's not gonna be here, so everybody's.
Right. Okay, we didn't have any last minute continuance requests, did we? Haven't checked email since 4:30. No, okay.
I didn't see any, Fran? No?
Nothing.
I didn't see any.
Okay.
Fran, you didn't get anything last minute, did you?
Uh, no, I didn't, I've sent everything over to you.
And we are up on LTC, well, actually, no, our school committee's up on LTC, again, so.
Oh, well.
Yeah, I'm recording it, so I'll forward it over to LTC after this.
Okay, great.
One second.
Everyone good to go, we got 6:30, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good evening, welcome to the City of Lowell's only Board of Appeals Public Hearing for February 22nd, 2021. Due to the COVID pandemic, the meeting will not occur in person. There are four options to access the meeting, there's Zoom through your smartphone, computer, tablet. We can watch on LTC or watch online, as well as review all documents online. We will hold public hearing for those wishing to speak on behalf of a petition. As with our Zoom conference call meeting, the clerk will facilitate members of the public that wish to speak as they sign in, call in, or use any of the other devices in order to have their words heard on the public hearing. With that being said, we're gonna move right into the meeting, we have a continued business, ZBA 2020-55 for variance, Batumata, Yachta, 173 Westford Street, Section 5.1.
No, look, look. The non-call.
They're on the line, Mr. Chairman, just waiting for them to log.
Hello.
Yes, hello.
No.
Yes, good evening, everybody.
Evening.
Evening.
We are here today on behalf of, or in continuation to what we discussed the last time, on behalf of 173 Westford Street in Lowell. We had submitted, requested.
Um, excuse me, could you just state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Stephen Mansory, I'm here with.
Fatima Jaiter.
That's the owner of the property. And I'm here for technical help.
Okay, you can go ahead.
All right, so, based on the document, the requested, during the last discussion, we have submitted a revised site plan, and then we've also have submitted a revised architectural layout. And we did our best to indicate what was, what was recommended during the meeting in terms of being able to show the layout of the basement, showing how, on the architectural drawing, the girders that we showed, and also how the water is managed within the site, and in the parking. The previous plan showed only one parking outside and inside, and we were able to revise the site plan to see that we could have two off-street parking, and even before the garage. We've submitted the document, I don't know if there would be any questions, any concerns, and here, and the owner also is here, and we can try to discuss that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that background information. Just for the public record, tonight, the alternate voted member for tonight's meeting is Mr. George Broco. That being said, the variance at 173 Westford Street will be opened up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? A portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed, would you like to open it up to the board, Van?
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's been packed through you, sir. I do, I do wanna say thank you to the applicant for the revised site plan and building plan, as well, as well as a few other documents requested by the board. Overall, I think, you know, I think this is a project that can be approved. You know, I don't really have any reservations, Mr. Chairman, those are my comments, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Van, Sean.
Uh, thank you, too, Mr. Chairman, I thank you to the applicant for going back and providing us with the information that we requested from the last meeting, brought a lot, I think, brought a lot of instances on trying to, trying to reserve as much green space as we possibly can there, and I think you did a great job in doing that and this, but I did have a couple of items I was kind of curious about, and first thing is, I think when we previously, if I'm not mistaken, at the last meeting, when we were just asking you to provide the dimensions of the driveway, or where the cars, off-street parking would be set, we were kind of looking at it more on the lines of getting, well, you only need two parking spots, and one would be taken up within the garage. The second one would be taken up outside of the garage, presumably driving up. And I see that you actually extended the parking lot for, for the parking spaces to provide the two cars, so you basically have three, is that the intention, you want to have three parking spots, the two outside, and then the one in the garage?
No, I think, well, when I reviewed the zoning things, and I thought about the car being inside and the one being outside. I've attended meetings where, when cars are stuck, are considered still as one, you know, because the one does not have, you know, an exit, the one inside without the one on the outside, some places, they may not recognize it, and it wasn't clear to me then, last week, that, that it was recognized as two parking lots, so just to be safe, I revised the whole thing and found out that I can actually provide two cars that can park side by side, and one cannot prevent the order from moving out like that, so that was actually the thinking behind it.
Okay, I mean, I got no problems with it, really, I was just trying to see if we can save a little bit more green space there, because you only need the two spots, but if you're, if you want to, if your intention is to have three, and I mean, I, I listen to what my other fellow board members think, but I don't really see any, any much issue with that. Again, we're trying to, trying to conserve as much green space as possible, that would be a good opportunity to kind of keep a little more side yard on that instance, for that, but as long as that parking space is dimensionally within the, within the setbacks, a little bit, somewhat, we can, we can work with that. The only, the other thing I was, and I'm glad that from, you revised the plans from the last time, when you had the concrete walkway pretty much going, encircling the whole
Yeah.
building.
Which has.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate, that, that seemed, that, that was good, I mean, that seemed, that seemed a little bit to me like a little excessive, but
Yes, sir.
I'm now looking at the, but I'm looking at the architectural plans, and I know when we talked about previously was in the backend, you would have a deck with stairs coming down from the first floor level, I guess you want to call it the first floor level, I mean.
That's right.
Uh, but it looks like now you're taking those stairs away and just making it a deck, just
That's right.
a deck outside, and that's it?
Correct.
Romeo and Juliet type deck, I guess you call it.
Like, that's right, like a cool-off deck.
Okay, I mean, if that's the intention, I mean, I would have liked to see the stairs down there, but if that's, if those are your intentions to keep that, I mean, the stairs, I had no problems with the stairs to begin with, the deck and the stairs, it was just confusing as to where the stairs would be coming out from the previous plan. And it looked like my intention, I thought maybe you were probably gonna do that, and then have it come down to the left-hand side, where it's gonna now reach the new walkway, coming up, the new stairway, stairway coming up, but, and looking at that, I'm, I mean, if that's what your intentions are, just to keep that outdoor deck with no stairway down, I mean, I guess if the bill, as long as there's no problems with it being, having to be a second set of egress, because you already have the one downstairs anyways.
That's right.
Basement.
We have two egress.
Yeah, you have two egresses anyway, so I really don't see any real issues with that, just seemed to me that, you know, those would have been nice little features, but you know what? What you got there is actually really good, I mean, it's like, you did a great job in setting it back up. I appreciate the plans that you went back and actually put in some landscaping, where you got now trees set up, we got like trees posted, one in the front lawn, four in the back, you know, got that whole sideware, sideways yard there as well, that we took out that concrete, concrete bedding, so all in all, I mean, I appreciate, I appreciate the work, you went back to drawing board and did this, I mean, it, I think it's, it's gonna work pretty very well with this, and I think this is something that we can approve of, provided that, I think last time, we'd asked a couple, I think I'd asked you just if you want to stick with the same conditions, that were, as long as you're on the same conditions from the prior approval of the variance.
Yeah.
Which was the Oh, yeah, treatment of the retaining wall with directive, with decorative blocks in the landscape plan, so the retaining walls having decorative blocks, and I think you don't need, I don't think, I don't think you need the second condition, which is to submit reside plot plans, because that's what we're working off of right now, anyway, so. So I would like the, the condition, the previous condition regarding the retaining wall having decorative blocks in the landscaping deck, in the landscaping, be included with that as a condition.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have, so, thank you, great, 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 great job getting back, I think it'd be a fantastic addition to enable it, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much, and if, if the board doesn't mind to indicate the option of us, I don't know, the client, because she told me she didn't need the stairs anymore in the back.
Okay.
But now, after hearing, you know, the potential that there could be an option, I don't know if that could be included, and then I can talk to the clients, do you?
I could go either way on that, I mean, I listen to my fellow board members, I mean, I think, I mean, I, I was anticipating you keeping the stairs there, but then you came back without it. Again, I can go either way on it, it looks, I think it's gonna, it looks like it's gonna be nice either way, but, I mean, it's up to.
Thank you so much.
We'll, we'll see, we'll see what my other fellow board members think, then I can go, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, Dennis.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a few questions, but I agree that this looks like a much more thorough application, so I think we have enough to work with here, for myself, at least tonight. In reviewing the floor plans, the second floor plan indicates a third bedroom, but it doesn't have a door, and then there's a master bedroom on the third floor or fourth level. So are we looking at four bedrooms?
Um.
No, I don't know what you.
Yeah, so, what, what we looked at was, that was gonna be potentially, yeah, that could be potentially a four-bedroom, yes. Yes, but we were thinking about more of the details of the architectural drawing in terms of whether there's going to be a designer double door, or it's just a regular 36-inch door there. The client was not too clear about it, so then just leave it at that point, and once we, if we go through the approval process, when we're applying now for the permit, we can now put a door there at, you know, whichever door that, as long as it meets the code, the building, the building code, we will put it there, but that was, I think that was the situation here.
Okay, well, I understand that might be your dream and hope, but right now, the plan should be modified to show that bedroom as open area or something, because you're not, your plan doesn't show a third bedroom there, it shows an open space. So it has to be one or the other, and I'm not sure you can get a bedroom that would be per code, I think you need 80 square feet per bedroom. If you'll get that with a hall getting to bedroom number two, and to getting to the door to go up to the master bedroom.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure you'll make the 80 square, I believe the code requires a minimum of 80 square feet for, for a legal bedroom, so. I'm not sure you'll make it, so.
I think what we'll do, we'll review it, if it doesn't make it, we'll make it an open space, if it does make it, if you don't mind, we would like to make it a bedroom.
I, I would like you to make a condition that the third bedroom shown in the second floor plan be revised to indicate a code-compliant room, and we'll just leave it at that, a code-compliant room, whether it's a bedroom or open space, whatever it is. All right?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Um, and then I wanted to ask about the site plan, I think it's called S. It's in this case. Where is it? There it is, site plan A3, so this is different than the other site plan that was presented. It indicates a paved surface at the stair going to the porch, which isn't shown on your current site plan. And it indicates less trees. Which indicates less pavement in the back, there's no stoop at the rear door, leaving the basement, and the stair that goes down doesn't have that, so this inconsistencies with the site plan, but.
Now, is it, are you, because there was a revised site plan that was last sent by the surveyor that was forwarded, let me see, which one is that? And are you comparing that to the, the way we indicated the site plan on the architectural drawing, sir?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, actually, I had already done the site, the architectural drawings completed out before that one was sent, and, and I would, we, we would go with probably the one that the stamps, the license surveyor stamped, and I would reflect that in the architectural drawing, but either one, if it's okay with you, we can, we can make one in agreement to the other in terms of the landing, but the architectural drawing had already been done based on the previous survey that was sent to us, and then, but the surveyor revised it and sent us this one.
So we need to correct, then, the revised site plan to show a paved surface at the stair going to the porch? There's just lawn when you come down the stairs, I don't think that's what your intent is, but maybe it is.
Yeah, so we revised the one on the architectural drawing to reflect the site plan that the surveyor stamped.
I'm sorry, maybe you misunderstood me, the I'm sorry, maybe you misunderstood me, the site plan, that's the revised site plan that you presented. Does not show a paved surface. When you come down the front stairs from the porch. You come down the front stairs on the porch on that revised site plan to, to lawn. So I think that that needs to be revised to indicate a front walk.
Okay.
Okay.
We will do that, sir.
And this is showing an intent for landscaping, so you have seven trees indicated.
Yep, yes, sir.
So as a minimum, I think we should um condition that this uh. Be acting as a landscape plan indicating a minimum intent of seven trees, site trees.
Yes, sir.
Is that agreed?
For me, yes, sir, yes, sir.
And then the last one I have is the walkway that goes down the side of the house, doesn't indicate steps. I'm assuming that it's not a ramp, that it's actually a stepped surface.
On, in the architectural drawing, we, we, I believe we clearly showed the steps on the side of the house. That goes down to the back, is that, i- is, are those the steps we are talking about, sir?
So again, the site plan needs to be revised to indicate steps on that walkway. Because right now you have a grade indicator on each platform that's roughly a foot difference. And a step would typically be something in the range of seven inches or eight inches. So, it doesn't conform to um.
The, the step, uh, I believe the step is the rise that is within uh seven inches. Uh, seven point two five or seven and a half, but I think the run. Uh, except otherwise, could go up to twelve inches, ten inches, I think it's a minimum.
That, that's fine, I, I'd just like to see a condition that the um sidewalk way indicate uh co-compliant stairs.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Because right now they're not indicating that. And that we have a width, no more than four feet, I don't know what your width is, but it looks like it's drawn, it could be. Five and a half feet.
No, it's four feet.
Four feet, okay.
Yes, sir.
Great, okay. Um. Let's see, case retreats. Um, that's all I had, so um, um, are we saying that we're going to um. Um, have a modified site plan as well and elevations that indicate a rear stair? A rear porch stair, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I think that should be a condition that that gets shown on the revised set that we approved for the variance, if we're gonna go forward with this. That that rear stair gets re-done and maybe reviewed with DPD. If the rest of the board accepts that condition. But. Um, all right. That's great, um, looking forward to this wonderful addition to the neighborhood, um. I, I'm, I applaud you for your um. Your ambition here to do such a substantial single family with this much site work in this location, so. I think the city would be well served to see this added to our um. Our built environment, especially along with. With those conditions, I can support this, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dennis, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I believe the additional information provided this evening is certainly satisfied the concerns I expressed when we last met. And as a result, I look favorably upon this petition, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I could definitely see the, the effort in, in taking care to ensure. Um, that, you know, the requirements are met, and it, it does seem that uh. You know, that this would be a, a, a great addition to that neighborhood, especially, you know, what recently happened on that street, so. Um, with, with what my mem- fellow members addressed, um, you know, with the conditions, I, I can support this project as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so you've, you've heard the comments and the concerns of the board, that we are gonna condition the previous conditions. And then set forth uh conditions um. As it relates to the rear stairwell, uh, concrete padding, the width and, and the like, so as we step through that. Um. Process, Mr. Clerk, if you could give a brief synopsis of the conditions. And the petition is in agreeance with it, then we can go to a full motion and a vote.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanted to clarify one more thing, Dennis, maybe, I don't know, I, I'm looking at the site plan, I see. There is a listing of proposed wide, proposed stairway on that, on that side there, is, is that? Is there something I'm missing on that, because it looks like it's listed on?
Yes.
Those, Sean, those are um contour elevations of one foot intervals.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, can I, can I speak on that again, please, because I was a bit confused, I was trying to locate it, please.
Yep.
Um, I thought you were talking about the other stairs I had already removed, the side stairs, there are contours there and there are stairs there shown as well. So there are contours there that showed um the elevations there, but there's also stairs. As well, you could see the twelve, twelve inches line for the run of the external stairs. That ends up to the concrete pad landing. So the stairs start from the bottom at the concrete pad landing and comes up to the parking, um, to the parking lot, or to the parking um. Pavement over there, and those are showing stairs. Uh, if you look at the architectural drawing as well, the renderings that we submitted. Um, you would see, um, you know, the three dimension and even the two dimension showing. The stairs that are shown here on the, on the site plan. So, so here on the site plan is showing contours as well. As um, it shows, since it's still a proposed stairs, so the contours can still go through them, but we did show. The stairs that ends up at the landing, I don't know if that makes that through any clarity on it.
It, it does help, but there's too much inconsistency here with the documents. And so I want to see a condition that we provide a co-compliant stairway on the side of the building. Right now, the documents have somewhere between, depending on the drawing you're looking at, eleven risers on one drawing. Sixteen risers on another drawing. Um, and, and, you know, you, 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 so your elevations in the architectural and your site plan don't match.
Okay.
You don't have to have as many steps as you're showing on your site plan to do co-compliant. The more you do, obviously, the more cost it is, um, so you, you should. Look at a solution that's a co-compliance stair and just be consistent, because your documents aren't consistent between the architectural and the site.
Okay.
So as a condition, we're gonna say, we just want to say that the sidewalk way um indicated on the revised site plan be code compliant?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so with that, um, one other thing I wanted to point out too before I read this. Uh, with, with regards to the trees, um, I'm just looking at the front lawn tree. And, I mean, it's great to have it there, but I think you should have that move closer towards uh, towards the um. Maybe a little bit more closer towards the. Border area, maybe a little bit in, because it, you know, you might be getting into an instance where it's gonna be. Uh, when someone's driving out, driving in, you might be getting to an instance where it's gonna block, um. It's gonna block sight view on a, on a car coming, getting out of the driveway. So you may want to kind of move that over, just, that's just, you may want to kind of move that over on the site plan as well, just, so we're. I know, that must, I don't know, does anybody else have any issues with that, or?
The, the way that.
No, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Just gonna grow.
The way, the way the trees indicated on the architectural site plan A three seems to make the most sense.
Yeah. Well, I'm returning to the site plan, the site plan has it right out in front. So, I think you gotta move that closer.
To the porch.
To the porch, yeah. With that, um, unless anybody else had any other questions or concerns, I can read off the condition, the proposed condition.
No, I don't, and anyone else, any other comments or concern by the board, for the conditions are right into the record. None being heard, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, with that, so the conditions are, um, number one, applicant shall include treatment of retaining walls with decorative blocks in landscape plans submitted. For building permit. Uh, number two, applicant to submit revised site plan. That uh indicates the following, uh, bedroom three, uh, the floor plan to be revised. To a co-compliant room. Uh, paved surface on the front, uh, showing a paved surface on the front porch pathway. Um, minimum of seven trees with the front tree being marked closer to the porch area. And number four is the sidewalk way uh indicate on the site plans be code compliant. And Dennis?
Very well, Dennis, you agree with those conditions as you requested?
Dennis had one more.
Okay.
One, the last one is to indicate a rear porch stair. And to work with, you, you need to develop that, maybe?
Oh, yeah, that, that as well. Brandon, did you get all those?
Yes.
Okay, so, so these are the conditions brought by the board, if you're in agree with them, clerk can read it to the record and we'll move forward with the vote.
Yes.
Okay.
We agree with them.
Mr. Clerk, thank you, with that being said, Mr. Clerk, may I have a motion?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB twenty twenty dash fifty-five for one seventy-three Westford Street. For variance approval under section five point one for a minimum lot area, minimum frontage, minimum front yard setback. Minimum side yard setback, minimum rear yard setback, minimum porch setback, and minimum garage setback. To construct a new single-family residential building with the previously mentioned condition.
May I have a second?
Do you, Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion. Sorry, Judge.
By Mr. McCarthy. May I have a roll call?
Uh, Chairman Perrin.
Uh, approve of conditions.
Member Peck.
Approve of conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve of conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Briere.
Approve with conditions.
Member Proco.
Prove with conditions.
So, so your petition has been approved unanimously, I want to um echo the sentiments of my colleagues and. Uh, thank you for working with DPD and the board. Um, to, you know, provide. Uh, this type of um property detail and upgrade uh for, for, for a home in a neighborhood that. Uh, will hopefully settle a nice family as, as you have there, and we appreciate your time and effort, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, so happy. Thank you.
You're welcome, best of luck.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye, take care.
Nice.
Uh, moving. Yeah, they're very, very excited, good to hear, uh, moving forward on the new business, ZBA twenty twenty-one dash one. First new business of the year, variances Lorenzo Arpini at seventy-four, seventy-six Chapel Street. Section six point one, Lorenzo Arpini has applied to the zoning board of appeals to seek. Variance approval to convert a three-family home into a four-family home. The property is located in an urban multifamily UMF zoning district. The existing home at seventy-four, seventy-six Chapel Street requires a variance under section six point one for off-street parking requirements. A site plan review under section eleven point four. For the conversion of a residential structure with more than three dwelling units and any other relief required in the lower zone ordinance. This is a petition I hear represented thereof.
I will, I will be representing myself.
Okay, good evening, so again, tell us a little bit about your petition and are you ready to move forward?
Sure, so um, I have recently bought this property, I would say, um, so last April, two, seven, seven, eight months ago. And.
Right, before you go any further, sir, can you just state your name and address for the record, the living address?
My, 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 my name is Lorenzo Arpini and my address is seventy-four Chapel Street, apartment number two. In Lowell, Massachusetts.
Appreciate that, continue, I apologize for the interruption.
Yeah, um, like I was saying, um, I have recently bought this property, um, I would say eight months ago, um. And um, the problem with this is that I have a uh one-bedroom unit completely apart from my, mine. That's legally part of my unit. But we have uh separate doors, um, separate, um. You know, um, like separate stairways and everything. And um, to me, um, it's, it's a huge waste to be um paying for heat. And um, for utility. And I have no use for upstairs, so I, this property now is um a ten-bedroom property. Um, so the number two apartment that we were talking about. Um, has five bedrooms, um, on one floor has a kitchen, three bedrooms, a living room. And um, a dine-in kitchen, and then um, if you uh take the stairs and go up the stairs, it has another kitchen. And it also has uh one living room, a bedroom and a bathroom, it's a completely uh separate unit. Um, I understand that um I have limited uh parking spaces. But um, for instance, if I uh rented uh this property um the way it is right now. Let's say for, for instance, for students, we would have um five students and we, we would have five cars being uh parked on the street here. So uh, basically, what I'm trying to do is instead of having um, because up there upstairs is legally two bedrooms. Instead of having um two different people leaving, a living up there in a completely different apartment. With two different cars, I'm trying to have only one, I'm, I'm just trying to organize the property the way it is, and I believe that. By doing that, this will be, uh, you know, the parking will be more organized and we will um limit everything.
Okay, is that all for now, sir?
Uh, yes, that's, that's all I have uh to say.
Okay, well, thank you, that being said, I'd like to open it up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of public hearing is now closed, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Um, probably to open it up to the board, so if you have a television on or a radio on in, in the room here, and if you could turn that off. So that we could, we have a lot of backdrop noise and I won't make sure.
But I will turn it off in one second.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, or if um, if you are not speaking, if you could just mute yourself. Any uh people who are attending.
Yeah, if you're attending and.
Is that better? Better now?
It seems to be coming from someone named Paul's phone, there we go, okay, thank you. I think we're good.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you. Mr. Chairman, you're muted. Mr. Chairman?
Am I back?
Okay, you're back, yep, you're back.
I'm back, okay, thank you very much for uh the audiovisual. Help uh from my board members and DPD, um, is there anyone wishing to speak? In favor or in opposition? Do you have anyone recognized? Uh, none being said, that portion of public hearing is closed, I'd like to open up to the board, Sean.
Uh, thank you, three, Mr. Chairman, um, a couple of questions, um. I'm, I'm looking at the applications, sir, and I'm, I'm, unfortunately, it's, it's, I see it very, very incomplete, because we're missing a lot of. A lot of things on here, um, you're looking for a. Uh, variance on parking, but all that's been provided to us is a certified plot plan. This says existing driveway, it doesn't state layouts of what the parking situation is on that existing driveway, which would be. A prerequisite, we really would need to know that, so we can understand how many spots we deal, what the spaces are, how they're spaced out. Uh, the dimensions and what we're dealing with here, so that's one thing that's missing. We would need uh on this instance, uh, and then also, most importantly, um, what's missing. Is um, the floor plans, I, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I, I'll take your word for what the, how the layout is, sir, but we'd like to. We would have to see how that's, how the building is laid out, where apartment number two. Um, I, I'll take your word for what the, how the layout is, sir, but we'd like to, we would have to see how that's, how the building is laid out where apartment number two. Um, you know, has however, your first apartment is laid out, your second apartment is laid out, where the proposed fourth unit is gonna, is supposed to be. Um, the stairways, egresses. Uh, bedroom, where the bedrooms are, where the, where the kitchen layout is, all that stuff. And I don't have any, we don't have any floor plans here. Um, so I can't gauge of how the layout of this is gonna be. Which then would then bring us into where the parking, how the parking layout is, how many parking spots we're granting variances on. Um, it's. I really don't have anything. Here to go on, uh, at this point. So, uh. If you, do you have that, do you have that information? Why has that not been submitted?
So, uh, what I have submitted, I mean, um, I, um, I went over this with, um, someone from, uh, from your department there and, uh, what I, um. What I have, what I thought it was being asked for was just, um, the plot plans and you guys would see. The measurements on the, um, the driveway and all that stuff and that's all I knew and you guys would be able to figure out from there. I mean, I'm, I'm, like I said, I, this is my first house that I bought. Um, I'm just a new homeowner. It's the first time that I'm dealing with this. So, um, it seems like that we're, we would be looking for, um, like my, um. Company that did my plot plans to, um, in state how many cars I could park and also in state, um. You know, like the, how big the land is and all that, because I think that that's pretty much what it says on the, uh, plot plans, right?
All, all it says is existing driveway. And I guess it said, it kind of gives a measurement of nineteen point two feet from the, um, rear. Plot line to the, you know, far left corner of the house or closest, uh, the closest portion of the house in the rear. Um, but I don't know what the layout is. I'm, I'm back there, uh, from the existing driveway, what the, you know, how many cars can you fit that there? Uh, do they, do they make, do they make, do they make driveway dimensional, uh, figures? Uh, or do they make the parking, uh, parking dimensional figures? I can't tell that. I can't even tell, um, I, I. Can't even tell what the distance is from the, uh. Right hand of the plot, from the rear portion, portion, the right, um, excuse me, left portion. Of the plot plan to the right portion of the plot plan to show what the distance is in the backend of the whole, of the whole existing driveway. Uh, I mean, this is important stuff that we really need if we're going to consider providing a relief or, uh, a park, or not parking there. Um, I mean, I'm presuming you don't have enough space to fit. Uh, you know, all what's there right now based on the layout of what's presented to me, but. I don't, I, I, I need to know how, how many. How many plan, how many, how much more relief are we going to be granting here and how it's going to affect the neighborhood? I mean, that's something, that's a prerequisite of what we're going to be required. To find is to how, um, how this affects the public good, which would be one of the public goods is getting cars off the streets. From off-street parking. So, uh, there's a lot of information here that's missing from the, um, from the application and, uh. And, uh, I mean, I, 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 I don't think I, we have enough here. Me personally, I don't think there's enough here for me to make a decision on this. I think we. We, we definitely need a new, no. New plot plan, uh, site plan with the layout of the parking dimension. Um, you know. We need, we definitely need layouts of the floor, uh, the floor plans so I know what. We're dealing with on the interior of how many units, so, well, I know how many units you're looking for, but what the layout of the units are. So.
Oh, you're talking about architectural plans? So I would have to like get an architect to, um, you know, basically design the way the place is with like measurements and everything?
Well, what your, what your plans are for the in, interior of the, yes, for the interior of the, of the, uh, of the property. You're gonna have to do, you're gonna have to do that to seek the second. But you're seeking a special permit. From, from planning, I presume? You're, you're gonna have to do that anyway. They're gonna be, I'm sure they'll be asking. Uh, I know we're only dealing with the parking dimension, parking.
Yeah, yeah, but that's, yeah, that's, that's, um, I was, I was aware that I was gonna, uh, that I was going to need that. But I was, I just wanted to see, uh, uh, how this meeting was gonna go and then I would apply that. Um, apply, uh, for the, um, for the planning with that information, with the architectural plans and everything. However, um. So for, um, the zoning board, I still, uh, need, um, a more detailed, uh, site plan, uh, layout, right?
Correct, yes. With the, with the parking, uh, providing the layout of the parking, you know, the off-street parking. And again, we'd like, we'd like to see these the floor plans too, is to find out what the layout of the, of the units are gonna be. Um, just to certify, we need to certify that. Yeah. Say, yeah, this is three, this is def, this is, this is definitely a three-family. Um, you want to turn it into a four-plant, four-family, but we need to, we need to confirm that. Um, because that, that factors into your relief for the parking. Because you're going from, you need six spaces right now. Um, and you're going to be four, you want to go to four units. Now you're gonna need eight. And, um, I don't know. It, it's, it's too, it's, it's too, too late with the, with the no, nothing listed on the plot, the site plan to demonstrate the layout of the parking. Uh, and with the fact that I don't know what the layout of the units are, I can't, I can't determine how much relief. We're, we're gonna have to grant you. And that's something I need that, I mean, I need, I would need it to set up, make a decision on this. I don't know what my fellow board members think, but I'm sure.
You would need, um. The, the floor plans only, uh, for the unit that I'm trying to add or for the whole house?
We'd like to see it all laid out.
Like all the units and everything?
Yes. Because you're, you're saying that one unit, the unit that you're trying to add in is a connection to one unit right now. You're what, uh, I think you called it like, uh, room number two or apartment number two or whatever. Um, and that it's, it's that, it's like an addition to that. Um, but we'd like to see how that's, we, we would like to see, we'd like to see how the whole layout is gonna be. That's, I mean, that, that's what I'd like to see. Uh, again, I'll leave it to my other fellow board members. That's, that's information that I think is critical to, to make a determination. On, uh, whether or not we should be granting. That's, so, those are my thoughts. Um, I'll listen to what my other fellow board. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
Dennis, you're muted.
Sorry about that.
Muted?
Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Dennis. Thank you.
Comments here, but, um, I agree with Sean that I don't believe. The, um, applicant has provided the prerequisites. That, um, are required for us to render a. Um, to review the, the application. Um, under eleven point two point four. Um, the applicant must submit a plan that contains the following data and in that. And this is for the zoning, uh, variance prerequisites under eleven point two point three of the low, um, mass zoning bylaws. Um, under Q, it says quantities and locations of existing proposed parking spaces. That's pretty clearly indicated that you. Need a plan for us to see that indicates what was existing. And what's proposed, but there's a lot of material here in these prerequisites that aren't provided. Um, and I understand, Sean, you, you're saying the floor plans. Um, under, uh, the prerequisites under P and T, they indicate elements that, um. Are missing that would be satisfied with floor plans. And so, um. Whether you were told that you can take the risk and do the floor plans after you get our approval, so you're not spending the money on the plans or not. Um, you're not meeting the prerequisites for the zoning right now. And doing the floor plans would do that. Um, under T specifically, it says total square footage of floor space for each use. I E. bedrooms, kitchens, living rooms, bathrooms, stairways. Um. And under P, you know, designation of each building or part thereof. So we need to see, uh, the use designation of each. Part so that this part of the building is used as a bathroom. This, so that, those are floor plans. Or a floor plans would do that as a solution, but you haven't provided that information for us. So I see this as an incomplete application. But apart from that, if I go to the. Information on the assessors. Um, documents, data that we have for the city, this site is, um, listed as a nine-bedroom, three-bathroom. Now you stated that it has ten bedrooms and I think you indicated that there's an additional bathroom. So you're indicating that there's work done in this house that the city may not be aware of. As in a illegal apartment being developed to create a fourth unit.
Well, but.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Well, let me just finish. I would question whether or not. What was done in the property has been sanctioned by the city or maybe it's grandfathered in. Or maybe the city just has the information wrong. But I'd like to know an explanation as to why we're reviewing something that seems to be. In conflict with what the city is documenting the property to have. And then the second part of this is that. I've been on the board over ten years now. I've never had a letter from the. Building Commissioner submitted stating such a, um. Um, reluctance for the board to go ahead with this variance. Because of the condition or the. The, I guess the condition or the, or the. The condition of the relationship maybe of the city to the applicant. So that does, that shouldn't weigh in, but at the same time. You know, you go by the property right now, there's what looks like a driveway maybe coming off of Chapel Street. That's not paved, that seems to be something that someone's using that. Is maybe just ad hoc. Um, there's, um, broken siding that might be asbestos. Down at, at, you know, four feet, three feet off the ground. That is not in good repair. Um, this, there's material on this property that one would question. Whether or not the intent here is, um. To do the right thing. So, um. I'm a little worried about the incompleteness of the application, but I've never seen a building commissioner give us a letter like this before. So I'm a little nervous about seeing that. Um. So, um, I'm not sure. Um, no, it seems like the property may have been an illegal fourth unit when you bought it and now you're asking us to. Find a way to help you get the monetary benefit from a full family in this neighborhood. That, that's kind of how I read it, right, wrong or indifferent. So. Um, at the moment, I would like to see this continued until we have the documents in front of us. But, um. You know, I, I see a lot of question marks for sure. Um, going forward. That's all I have.
So, um, what I have to say about that is that.
Thank you, Dennis. So we're going, the board is gonna, um, we're gonna continue with the board and we can go. Um. We can have conversation. So I'd like to keep it going with Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, with all due respect to the applicant, quite frankly. I'm unable to, uh, judge the merits of this petition considering the absence of the required information. Ultimately resulting in an incomplete application. Uh, therefore. It would be premature of me to offer any additional comment this evening. I think we need to go back to the drawing board. And, uh, come back before or set a later date. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. George?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I, I agree with my fellow board members. Uh, there is not much information, um. To, to look at and, um. You, you would wonder the fact that there is a discrepancy with, with bedrooms. And I, I understand that, you know, you recently purchased the property. Um. The street's very small and, you know, parking is, is a very important factor in, in that neighborhood. Um, so I, I, I think as, as, uh, member Callahan mentioned, you know, we would definitely need to see all that information. Especially in relevance of parking, but also the, 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 the site plan and the, and the floor plan that would. Um, at least give us a feel as to how, you know, this would impact the neighborhood. So, uh, again, I agree. I think that it should be re-submitted and then we can get a full scope of the intention. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, George. Dan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through, through you, sir. Um, you know, I, I don't want to belabor this, um, topic, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you know, I, I do agree that, uh, there's, there's a few documents, well, a few prerequisites, um, missing for this application. Uh, you know, I, I think we could work with the applicant, um, to, to make a, make a project similar to this happen. Um, um, with this petition, I just think, um. You know, like, like my colleague said, it's, um, it's missing some key documents. So once, once we get all that, we could have a, a fuller. Broader picture of what, uh, what, what's on the table and what we need to, uh, approve or what we can approve or cannot approve. Um, so, uh, those are my reservations for the chairman. Uh, thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, sir, you, you, you've heard the concerns of the board. Uh, it, it is a, it is an incomplete. Uh, application with pre, pre-requited, uh, documents is part of the checklist. Um, so I'm gonna take the, the wisdom and the words of my colleagues and seek a continuance of this. Uh, your thought and decision would be, will you be able to get in line within the next meeting, which is in two weeks? Or would you need another two weeks out? So Francie, Francesca, could you provide those two dates to the petitioner?
Sure. Um, so the next meeting is March eighth and then the meeting after that is the twenty-second.
Okay. So, sir, do you think you would need two weeks or four weeks for a continuance to complete the application package?
First of all, I'd like to, uh, just ask a question. Uh, where do I, uh, where do I go to get these, um? Floor plans? Is it something that the city, that I have to get from the city or do I have to hire an architect to draw these?
Uh, you have to, Dennis?
Um, sure. Uh, through Mr. Chairman, um, as an architect, um, the city has very limited documents on that property. And so I don't think that you would be able to satisfy the board with anything that you get from the city, um, G I S site. So you would have to have someone, whether they're a registered architect or draftsman or someone. Develop a plan for each level that documents the spaces and the egress. Um, and that person should be giving some thought to code so that whatever's on the plan makes. Um, enough sense that it would be resembling. Whatever you have for a final product when you have a building permit. So it doesn't have to be an architect, can be a, a draft person or someone that understands how to put together plans, but. That would be what I would suggest.
Well, Dennis, to your point though, when you pointed out the variance requirement of, of requirements under eleven point two point four, I'm looking at section B. Which states that plans shall be prepared by a registered land surveyor, professional engineer or architect.
And that's the site, that references the site plan, Sean, directly.
Okay. Oh, you're talking about the floor plans?
I'm talking about the floor plans.
Okay, yeah, all right. Yeah, I don't think that's, yeah, that's fine. Thanks for the correction.
So, so that you're, you're getting, um. Highly qualified value advice from Mr. McCarthy. Uh, you also have the, uh, we, we have a, a wonderful DPD department that will be able to walk you through. Uh, the prerequisites and maybe make some recommendations, uh, to you, uh, to help you move forward with. Your petition practice and then bring it back in front of us, uh, for a, uh, consideration and a vote. So. Would you be looking for two weeks out or four?
I would say I would be looking for, uh, four weeks out.
Okay, that makes sense. It gives everybody enough time to, uh. Digest, uh, this petition and, and get, uh, ducks in a row. So. That being said, which would be March twenty-second, is that correct, Francesca?
Yes.
Okay. And with that being said, any other comments or concerns from the board?
Uh, one, one minor administrative thing, Mr. Chairman, that, uh.
Yes, sir.
Which I can confirm maybe with Francesca or with the applicant. Looking at the supplement, um, the variant supplement that was provided. It wasn't checked off that the filing fee was paid. Was the filing fee paid?
Yep, everything was paid. Everything, all of the. Yep, everything was paid. Everything, all of the prerequisites, well, I won't say prerequisites, but everything on the checklist has been met for this application.
I think we need to have the applicant submit, amend that supplement. I just want to make sure that that box is checked. I understand, no, there hasn't been any issues in the past, but I mean, I think based on a conversation we're probably going to have later in this meeting, we probably need to make sure that that's checked off in the future.
Three, Mr. Chairman. I just had one other thought, and that is correcting the site plan to indicate the property to be into half of Cottage Street so that the area represents exactly what the applicant owns. I think that that currently is incorrect. It's true that half of Cottage Street belongs to the site.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or concerns prior to a motion by the board? None being heard. That being said, Mr. Clerk may have a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-1 for 7476 Chapel Street to continue the public hearing of this matter to March 22nd, 2021.
May I have a second?
This is Van Peck. I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Listen, seconded by Mr. Vice Chair. That being said, may I have a roll, roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Approve continuance to March 22nd, 2020.
Member Peck?
Approve continuance.
Member Callahan?
Approve continuance to March 22nd, 2021.
Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance to March 22nd, 2021.
Member Briere?
Approve continuance.
Member Procol?
Approve continuance to March 22nd, 2021.
So your petition has been continued to March 22nd. As previously stated, please reach out to DPD for the prerequisites and any other help you may need, and we'll see you then.
Right. Can I just make one comment before the meeting is over?
Sure.
So just on my defense, like I have said, I recently bought the property, and I did see the email that the building commissioner has sent. I am not sure how the previous owner dealt with the city, but I have had the building inspector here at my house to take a look because he sent me a letter saying that I am missing a C O I certificate. And he has told me that in order to pass that C O I, for the, for me to get the C O I certificate, I have to rebuild my back stairway. And I also have another meeting with him and my general contractor on Thursday at four o'clock for him to take a look and tell us how he wants us to do that. So I am very trying to comply with every single code imposed by the city of Lowell. I am not opposite to anything. You know, I am trying to correct everything here that is wrong, and I will also correct, fix my siding issues that was brought up here in this meeting.
Well, thank you, sir. We appreciate your information and your willingness to move forward in a positive direction and work with DPD. You know, you previously stated you have a meeting coming up, so hopefully we're all heading in the right direction, and we can have a appropriate package in front of us in March and make a vote to move forward or not. We appreciate your time.
Well, just reviewing what I have to get so that I'm not missing anything in the next meeting. Site plan layout with how, with parking spaces, and then floor plans from whole house, and then also follow up with T P T for any other thing that I may need.
Correct.
Dennis?
Correct. Dennis, and then what was that final thing, Dennis?
If I could just ask.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Are indicated as code compliant or asking for relief. If you're gonna do stacked parking for a full family, I believe that that's asking for relief. So we just need to have parking spaces as you want to indicate them, but we need to then know if you're asking for relief, and you should know that because stacked parking, I believe, beyond a two-family requires relief as well. So just to be clear. There's a lot of nuances here, and so just, it's not going to be, you know, a simple little little application. There's a lot of nuances to the city code.
Okay. So that's, thank you. Great information, Dennis. Thank you. So any other issues or concerns, if you can deal directly with DPD, sir, and they'll walk you through the remaining process. Okay? Okay, so we're all set with this petition. Let's move forward to under the new business, ZBA 2021-2 for special permits. N H signs 1148 Bridge Street, Section 6.3. N H signs has applied to the Lowell zoning board of appeals for a special permit. CAD 3 internally illuminated signs for a new business, Reverie 73 at 1148 Bridge Street. This is a recreational marijuana retailer that was approved at a planning board hearing on December 7, 2020. Property is located in the regional retail RR zoning district and requires a special permit under Section 6.3 for internally illuminated signage and all other relief required of Lowell zoning ordinance. So a petitioner here, number petitioner tonight?
Evening. My name is Peter March, New Hampshire Signs, 66 Goldledge Avenue, Auburn, New Hampshire. And I'll be talking.
Good evening, sir. Just want to tell us a little bit about the petition and.
Thank you. So we're applying for a special permit to add illuminated signs to a new business in an existing building. Business is called Reverie 73, 1148 Bridge Street, and it is a recreational marijuana dispensary. So we're asking for three signs to be illuminated in terms of Section 6.3.7. A main ID sign, a pylon sign outside the front of the building, a building sign, and a small address sign. The signs all conform to current requirements. Thirty square foot for the main ID, 100 square foot for the building, and two square foot for the address letters. They also conform to all lighting requirements, i.e. they're lit by a steady white light. So we're asking for the signs to be halo lit. In other words, metal letters with clear backs. They cast a softer backlit glow than conventional facelit letters, but are nonetheless legible. By way of background, Massachusetts, along with a number of other states, have seen fit to legalize recreational and medicinal marijuana. And voters legalized medical cannabis in 2012, recreational 2016. The site has been under review of the planning board as a retail facility and was approved at a public hearing on December 7, 2020. Internally illuminated signs abound in the area. Autozone, Hafner's, next door, Smiley Dental, Walgreens are all adjacent properties and all have internally illuminated signs. In fact, no immediate neighbors have anything but internally illuminated signs. So in terms of the elements that we need to prove, the social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal. Cannabis Control Corporation Commissioner, beg your pardon, of Massachusetts is a government agency that regulates the retail marijuana industry. The C C C has approved the applicant for license to operate this retail marijuana business. I've got to say, I learned some stuff about the marijuana business when I was, when I was you know, writing this application, but legal cannabis has created approximately 211,000 full-time jobs in America as of 2019 January. And Massachusetts has added 9564 cannabis jobs in 2019 alone. In fact, and I was amazed by this, there are two times as many legal marijuana workers as there are dentists in the country. The, there's a report from an organization called Leaffly that basically estimates the job growth rate at 370% for 2019 with approximately 12,500 jobs added to the Massachusetts economy by January 2020. And again, for some other context, in 2019, the cannabis market created more jobs than retail salespeople and food service workers combined. Thus, as stated, it's a prime employer and an economic engine, and it is in the best interests of Lowell to ensure that the business is successful.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate that.
And then particularly, the efficacy of the signs proposed. Lighting is a major element of the visibility of the signage. The site is in the middle of an area where most, if not all, adjacent signs are internally illuminated. Its signs should be at least visible as the others. The master plan calls for the introduction of greener technologies. These signs support that by using LED illumination. Previously, the building signage with old Giovanni's was fluorescent, which is a dirtier, less efficient technology. To the second point, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. The vast majority of customers are expected to take personal vehicles to the establishment. However, the organization has taken into account the increasing number of customers taking ride share services such as Uber and Lyft. The applicant submissions to the planning board have additional application concerning traffic safety and parking. Internally illuminating these signs will make them more readable to people, regular visitors, but also to occasional customers, such as possibly ride share drivers. The signs are clear, well-designed, and laid out. Major driver in many most, many motorists' decision-making is clear, legible signage, and good signage promotes good safe traffic. Other architectural elements, such as the honeycomb on the wall, are designed to provide subtle ambient light to enhance security. These signs complement those elements. Adequacy of utilities and other services. There is no effect on utility or other public services, except the signage will use significantly less power than the old Giovanni's signs since they are illuminated by LED. Neighborhood character and social structures. The new building is fresh, modern, and appealing. It'll represent a major upgrade to a rundown building that had seen better days with attractive facility with high-quality materials, in particular signage and other architectural features. Adjacent buildings such as Autozone, Smiley Dental, and Walgreens are newer. The Hafner's gas station next door will be refurbished imminently and with new internally illuminated signage. This building and its signage will contribute to the revitalization of this particular area. Impacts on the natural environment. The signs are illuminated by LED. Not only do they use significantly less power than the existing signs, which are powered by fluorescent lamps, they last longer, and as supporters are aware, fluorescent lamps lasted two or three years in this application and are toxic to dispose of. Potential fiscal impact, including impact on city services, tax base, and employment. The master plan calls for the creation of opportunities for existing businesses to thrive, invest in local economy, and become more competitive in the regional, national, international marketplace. The economic business has already been discussed above, and having effective signage will only serve to cement the success of the business.
Well, thank you very much, sir. We appreciate that. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board? Dennis?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of comments, but I will say, when I first saw this application, I said, boy, look at what's going on over there. That's, that's a beautiful-looking graphic. Is this a bar or boutique restaurant? What, what are we? And I said, I was kind of like, you know, I was kind of hoping that someone was brave enough to open a bar, but it's COVID, so it's too early, I think, right now for those things to happen in that location. But the graphics were very nice. I think you've done an outstanding job on creating an appealing retail establishment visually. And I like the fact that you, by showing the strength, your sign, I think it's 81 square feet versus the 100 square feet, which is allowed for your pylon sign, a wall sign, I'm sorry, but I'm a little confused about your math. One says the address sign is no bigger than two square feet, but I think in other places it appears that it's, was it 2.5 square feet or something? So 2.44 square feet, sorry. So what is it? Are we looking at something that complies with the two square feet for the address, or is it over what is?
I think that's a mathematical error. I would be happy to have the board create a condition that it's two square feet and we'll adjust it accordingly.
That's the easiest thing, I think, for us to do. It's usually the most consistent thing with the application. And then the other typical thing we do is the hours of illumination. Is that defined yet?
Again, I would say half an hour after the business closes or as the business closes.
And I think we typically have as a condition a half hour before sunset and a half hour after closing time, but do you know what closing time is?
I don't. I don't know that. I'm not sure.
Well, I'll leave it up to the rest of my members if we can leave it open-ended. No later than 1:00 PM. I don't know what your, is there a, you don't know, you have no idea?
I have no idea what the hours of the business would be. I mean, I'd be happy to say half an hour after the business closes or 15 minutes after the business closes.
I think, I think those are the only two conditions that I saw that we should have here, but it looks beautiful. I wish Patriot Care looked as good as this.
There's an awful lot about this in the last six weeks, so.
Yeah, it looks beautiful. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Dennis. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I do agree that this is a very well-put package and the visuals and the actual sign and the layout. It looks, you know, it's a good-looking sign. You know, I think during these tough times, you know, people have to be creative in terms of how, you know, they, what kind of business they do and how they want to operate, and I think this is another creative business for the city. You know, I, you know, I think some people will enjoy this, you know, the product and service this business offers, but in terms of the sign, I think it makes sense. You know, aesthetically, it'll fit in with that, with kind of that lot, that area, that whole kind of strip. So overall, the sign portion and, you know, the marketing sign part that we're voting on approving tonight, I have no issues with that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With all due respect, I think I should recuse myself from this as I am familiar with this project in another capacity, not from a user's perspective, but as a neighborhood leader. So, so I'm familiar, and I think it would be appropriate if I recuse myself from.
Okay, well, thank you, George. Appreciate that. Mark?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Sean?
Thank you. Three, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, great project. Now, once again, spectacular presentation, Mr. March. now, once again, spectacular presentation, Mr. Marsh. I know you've been before us plenty of times before. Signage, you always have a very thorough uh presentation on your signage and it always is great. Fifty, and yeah, the graphics, as Dennis said, the graphics are outstanding. Um, and I, I like that. I'm actually very, I was very intrigued by the honeycomb portion of the, of the building and wondering if that was going to be illuminated. You said it's going to be like some sort of soft lighting.
Yeah.
Um, you're, you're muted, Mr. Marsh.
But I believe it's the chemical structure of cannabis. I think that's the, the uh, the reason that it is what it is.
Okay, but, but that, but that honeycomb portion of it on the part of the building, you said it's going to be partially like illuminated, like soft lighting? By saying though, because I, I mean, I, I think that would be, that, that would seem like an awesome feature to that.
Yeah.
Uh, to that building and add to its, um, you know, add to the decorum, which would be, which would be great. Um, I guess, um, yeah, I, I mean, I don't know other issues other than um the conditions that Dennis said, and I think what we usually do, if I'm not mistaken, Dennis, is one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset or close of business, whichever comes later. That, that's what uh, from, or maybe, Mr. Chairman.
That is correct. You are correct, Mr. Clerk. That is our standard language for illuminated signs.
So, if, if, if you're, if you're in agreement with those conditions, Mr. Marsh.
Yes, absolutely.
It seems fairly reasonable. It sounds like you are. Very, this, this looks like it's going to be a very great addition business-wise to the, to the neighborhood, um, which is, you know, nice commercial district there and we should be best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, you've heard the comments of the board. Uh, I do, I also appreciate your uh, your presentation and your outline of um of this particular petition and uh the little background of history on it as well and uh the positive piece that you brought here today. Uh, I, I think it's amazing. I think the graphics are amazing. I, I was in the same line as Dennis, wondering what was going there and uh it's nice to have another business in the city of Lowell on the tax roll. So, we do have a recusal from a member ProCo. Um, that being said, we have the conditions which to you are in agreeance with. Uh, I'd like to move forward, Mr. Clerk, with a motion.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB twenty-twenty-one dash two for one, one for a bridge street for a special permit approval under section six-point-three. They have three internally illuminated signs for a new business with the conditions. Uh, the first one, the address sign is not to exceed two square feet. And uh the second condition is that hours of illumination will be one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset or close of business, whichever comes later.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Uh, approval conditions?
Member Peck?
Approve the conditions?
Member Callahan?
Approve with conditions?
Member McCarthy?
Prove with conditions.
Member Briere?
Approve with conditions.
And member ProCo uh accused himself, so that'll be it.
Thank you. So, sir, your petition has been unanimously approved. Uh, we appreciate your time and effort and uh we wish the business the best of luck.
Thank you very much and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a great night. Okay, moving forward into other business. We have landscaping plans as a prerequisite. Discussion with staff regarding requiring landscape plans for certain types of projects before the ZBA. Like to open this up for discussion on the board. Um, communication was set in regards to uh landscape plans as a prerequisite. Um, internal memos have been discussed and we would like to open it up for, for discussion. Um, I'd like to open it up to Sean.
Uh, thank you.
Synopsis of concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate Francesca bringing this to uh, to our attention as we've come up with in the past with numerous issues, numerous thing, instances such as today where applicants were not providing information that we, uh, and looking at the application, well, we probably assume it's required. Um, uh, it's listed as the following may be requested, but it, the board is asking, we, you seem to be asking for these things, and quite frankly, I believe uh these things are more in the lines of being required, uh, requirement, including landscaping. Um, I would also throw in the floor plans as well in many, in many of these instances, such as uh what we've uh, what we did with Chapel Street. Um, and I think, again, I think it would be uh Dennis's point previously, looking at, um, he pointed out too, on the requirements of the eleven-point-two-point-four with regards to plans, a lot of these things are being, are listed in, are really requirements that have to be provided. Um, and even though it's listed on the application as the board may ask for it, um, I think we really should make these more listed more as required and not in the instance of the application as something that the board may ask. That may confuse some applicants and instances where they may probably be thinking, well, uh, I just did, given the bare minimums here. More and more of these uh instances in the past, like where we're asking for these things we're g- we're grateful to continue what's just been provided. So, I think uh it should be, we should get, make the, make landscaping and I, I would also say floor plans. Uh, I'd probably throw floor plans in the mix on that as well. And uh my other concern, and I, sorry, I didn't mean to, I mean, I, I only brought it up in the instance with Chapel Street because uh it, it just seemed like an example of the applicant. Um, I, I could see it, the applicant just not checking off the correct box or whatnot, but um, because of one, of an instance in the past, I just would like to make sure that the applicants uh completely fill out, look at these, fill out these applications and check the property boxes um where necessary. Um, so, so it's a, lead, more alleviates my concerns unlike whether or not, uh, because, again, I, I know it's not happening, Francesca, because I know, and I know you guys are busy, we brought it up in the past, um, that you're not accepting applications without the filing fees, but I, there was one instance in the past where it was. And again, I just want to make sure that that's being done to alleviate my concerns and making sure that they check that box off would be really important for me, because it basically certi- they certify that they, they pay. Um, so, uh, those are my, my concerns on that. Um, and uh I'll just, we'll listen to whatever my other fellow board members like to say about. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think that what we have here is a uh, a, a need to understand what a landscape plan requirement is and what we're asking for. So, what I mean by that is, as an architect, I have a landscape architect do a landscape plan. He selects the types of um daylilies and he selects the type of mulch that we put down or the river wash stone, and he selects the varieties of trees that we're using and the caliber size and the type of um material that goes into the hole that is uh for stabilizing the tree's material. There is something else that I think is already listed as a requirement under U. So, this is under eleven-point-two-point-four. Applicants must submit. Under U, it's called dimensions and size and square feet of all landscape and recreation areas and depiction of materials to be used, grasses, five-foot shrubs, et cetera. To me, what we're asking for, at least what I think, is a plan that depicts area that's long, shrubs, and maybe it says five-gallon shrubs, but it doesn't say that it's going to be anything like a, a, a particular rhododendron or a particular azalea or a particular shrub, but and then the trees are two-and-a-half inch caliper, evergreen, deciduous. I'm not sure if we need a landscape architect at our stage to do a landscape plan that defines the nitty-gritty that is actually used for a nursery to order from. I think what we need, at least in my opinion, is an understanding of where the landscape is going, what kind of landscape are we using, and the, um, and that's it. And so what we already have as a prerequisite, I think, if it was, you know, followed, would be fine. But that's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Van?
Uh, th- through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, wh- when I was seeing, when I saw this uh topic uh on the agenda for tonight, um, I did try to look into um, you know, what, what uh certain paxis, other kind of other towns or cities, other communities um in the Commonwealth do in terms of, you know, their, their permitting process and special permits and various process. Um, you know, I, I, I think if, if we required um a landscape plan as part of the prerequisite, that actually would actually be in line with a lot of towns and municipalities or communities. I think even in Massachusetts, the, or the Commonwealth, or even outside of the Commonwealth. Um, so I don't think this is a big stretch to make it a prerequisite. Um, and, and end of the day, it, it actually would make things easier. Um, just, just to make sure we have a bigger picture, we understand what on the land or on, on the parcel, what is paved or not paved, or what is green based on that. So, it gives us a completed picture. You know, I'm not, I don't have the architect background, like Mr. McCarthy or the legal background, like Mr. Callahan. So, I'm just, I'm just a regular guy, but I think if, if we require people to have um kind of that um landscape plan, it would give us, or at least myself, a, a, a better picture and it'd help, I think, towards the overall project, if that makes sense. So, I think to me, this totally makes sense, making it part of the requirements. So, those are just my thoughts, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question to Francesca. Does our planning department recommend or endorse this idea?
Um, so I was, I was, sorry. Can you hear me?
We got you, but you got some reverb on.
Okay, should be fixed now. Um, so I totally agree. I think that it is appropriate for us to be requiring landscaping plans, especially where with the majority of these applications, we're seeing that as a condition of approval, we are asking people to make landscaping plans. So, I do think that in many instances, it makes sense to uh require them. Um, in particular, uh, for, I think it's the most common theme for um single-family, new single-family homes, new duplexes, or I don't think that we've had a, a three-family home um since I've been here, a new three-family home. Uh, not a conversion, but like a, a complete new build, um, as well as like a smaller commercial um building. Uh, however, for the, for site plan review, for site plan review, we do require landscaping plans already um in the site plan review process, and I will also add that I don't, we don't um think that it's a good idea to require landscaping plans as a blanket for all variants or special permit applications before the board, because for some of them, it does not make sense, like, for example, um, it, I think it makes the most sense. Both I and DPD staff think it makes the most sense for these new builds, like a new single-family home, a new two-family or a three-family, or a commercial build that doesn't get to the site plan review threshold. Um, but for other applications, like, I, for example, with um tonight's Chapel Streets application, I'm not sure it would make sense. Well, I guess it's for a, a variance for driveway, so maybe it would make sense to have a a landscaping plan in that instance, but for every single variance, it's not necessarily uh pertinent to the, the relief that they're requesting. So, I would prefer to just state more, be more clear in our application form and say that for new single-family, two-family, or three-family homes, a landscaping plan or commercial, new commercial, a landscaping plan would be required. And for these instances, floor plans are required and expand, because right now, it's, it's sort of unclear and I think you, you did a good job of, because I've been looking more at the checklist um than each and every one of the um the items in that long list at the very end. So, I think being more explicit in the checklist, which is what we as staff use the most and what um the applicants use, being more clear about what applications require floor plans, potentially expanding that, and then also um expanding then the uh making the landscape plans a requirement for certain types of projects, I do think makes sense. But as a blanket requirement, requiring both, I mean, it doesn't obviously make sense for a variance for a sign. It doesn't make sense to require them to get a floor plan. So, I think that we have to be clear in our application about exactly what um, what types of applications require landscape plans and what type of applications require floor plans. Um, and I think that that makes perfect sense and that we should do that, but I don't think that it makes sense to do a blanket requirement, because not every variance plan, not every variance application needs a floor plan. So, that's where we uh stand with that.
Thank you, Francesca. Uh, no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. George?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, um, I am like a, a member of Van Peck. Uh, I'm just a regular guy trying to go through this process and try to make sure that I, you know, follow the guidelines and, and follow the lead of, of my senior members in order to make any intelligent decisions. So, that being said, I say I would have to go along with the majority.
Can I, can I ask Francesca, can I ask Francesca, what if we limit it, what, what, what if we limit, um, like you said, it's, it's not going to be required and everything, but what if we limit it just to demand, uh, request for a dimensional relief? Like kind of five-point-one or um any other, like, there's something, there's something to deal with dimensionally. Any, any variances that, that deal with dimensional relief, uh, we're going to require, uh, we'll, we'll require a landscape. That seems, that seems to fit into the whole, that may, that may take into effect with the whole dimensional aspect of it as far as.
I, I see what you're saying, but I'm thinking about sometimes people proposing a deck or something, a deck that infringes on the rear yard setback. I, forcing someone to per- to submit a landscaping plan when they're trying to install a deck doesn't seem uh like a proportionate request by the board, in my opinion.
Well, could we, I guess, to that extent, and I'll, I'll listen to whatever my other fellow board members think. I guess we can require it, but if you don't think it's necessary and don't want the applicant to read, to provide it, or don't think it's necessary the applicant to provide it, then just let us know in a comment, in the memos, like, uh, like well beforehand, or maybe, I don't know, something. And maybe there's something we can, because I, I, I don't want to.
We can always come up with a draft of what we think makes sense and then, and then we can discuss it and if, and go from there if, if that works, but I, I don't, I really don't think that requiring a landscaping plan, I think it makes the most sense for new commercial, new single-family, two-family, or three-family homes, but requiring it for five-point-one, sometimes the five-point-one can include things like a second-story addition, um, things that just don't relate to the yard space. So, I don't think that it makes sense to blanket it with five-point-one, and then six-point-one is parking, and sometimes for parking, it does make sense to have a landscaping plan. So, I would rather, yeah, it's tricky, and I think it, it will require development, and that's why I think it might make sense for us to, to modify the application form, and then we can, as an iterative process, develop one that both staff and um the ZBA thinks makes sense.
Well, I think, I think what we also need to understand is that, um, you know, we, in order to be consistent with our application, the checklist must have items not only that are required, but preferred or, or just plainly needed. Um, and as far as the landscape plan uh goes, I, you know, your, your points are extremely valid, Francesca. Um, but we've also have to keep in mind that when we do expect a landscape plan as part of dimensional requirements, uh, when it's- uh, when it's, when it's not, you know, informed to the petitioner that we need that, it, it general, it generates sometimes a continuance because there are, there are certain applications, and you mentioned them, driveways included, uh, for buffers to neighbors, where we, we, you know, to Dennis' point, we don't need to be specific with, um, the plant, but we need to understand what's going in there so that we can uphold, you know, the neighborhood, uh, the neighborhood piece that, you know, we're required to for all our citizens, because then if we don't have anything that's consistent, or we don't have anything that we can then turn to, uh, for reference or as part, it's, they're just all going to become conditions, in my opinion. And then, not being disingenuous to any members of, of the city, but along the line, today's, you know, favor becomes tomorrow's regular assignment, so thing, things could get out of hand rather quickly, and then if we don't have those where, where we think they're required, then you know, people aren't going to put up those, um, those buffer zones or, or trees or shades or, or privacy walls or uh, uh, things of that nature. So I agree with, I agree with, um, the board members that, you know, we, we need to have something in draft. I think if DPD comes with something in draft and we look at it, um, and we put that, and what our intent is, is just basically to, you know, ensure that everything is taken into consideration for the application, because we've gone through a period of time, uh, of that being complete, and, um, we don't want to go backwards, in my opinion. Um, I agree, I don't think it's, you can't, someone's putting on a deck on the second floor, uh, for them to have to have an architectural landscape plan may be, may be excessive and, uh, prohibitive towards their budget, but um, if we, if we draft a memorandum and if we make it part of the checklist, and then we put a notation in that, you know, inclusionary or exclusionary, I, I don't know, um, how we move forward with that, but I, I, I think it's, it's valid and needed in, in most cases. So, I mean, as far as planning department goes, um, and this is being bounced around there, that's certainly something, uh, you know, your insight is the reason why, uh, we, we turn to you for this information. So perhaps there is the draft stage of how we can look at this, of the, there's both a, as a department and as the board, and then make the most practical solution and, uh, put that in place so that everybody's on the same page. That's, those are my comments and concerns. But I do think we're in a position, kind of where we were at the FAR, that once we get it in the documentation and we get it in writing and everyone's in, in the standing, it's, it's out in the open and everybody can be on the same page, so no one is, you know,
Right.
taken back by, by, by any of, you know, and, and, you know, and, and the main, the main reason is to get the petitions in front of us in an orderly fashion, have a complete package, uh, listen, listen to the petitioners in the public, uh, have the board members discuss it, make a, make their, make their decisions and make a vote, move on without having uh, multiple continuances, so. That's my take, and, and the, um, any other comments or concerns or, and, you know, I think, I think drafting, drafting a memo for us to look at is, is viable.
Mr. Chairman, could I just add one more thing, sir?
Certainly.
Um, uh, just, just through you, sir, to, to, to Miss Segliano. Um, I, I don't know if it's possible if DPD or, uh, someone could take a look at what other municipalities and towns and city uh, does in term of their, their permitting process and what's required and what's not, and if landscaping is required. I, I would, you know, I didn't do an in, in-depth, uh, research, but I, I would assume that this is in line, it would be in line with common best practices of other municipalities. So I just wanted to ask, ask that request, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Makes sense. Any other comments, concerns?
Yes, and, uh, three, Mr. Chairman, if I could. Um, maybe we could get the planning department to weigh in on what they feel the document that we have here in front of us when, in regards to what it meant by a landscape plan. Um, if it is meaning a plan that illustrates this specific species of all plants and size of all plants and is stamped by a landscape architect, or is simply a plan generated by a civil engineer that indicates size of shrubs and size of trees and maybe the, you know, so, so I, I would like to see the understanding as to what is meant by the planning board and also what is meant by the, um, variance prerequisite eleven point uh, eleven point two point four U. Because that is out in the public realm for our applicants to follow as a document that's required. And so what is meant by U that states that they're supposed to be providing a depiction of materials to be used, grasses, five foot shrubs, as a prerequisite? Is that, and, and should that be changed as well? So in this whole, you know, revisiting this thing, do we revisit what that statement says just because it's a little confusing? We're saying a landscape plan might not be provided, but we're saying that we need to do a square feet of all landscape depicting materials, use of grass as a prerequisite, so this seems to be a, in my opinion, um, some confusion generated by our document itself.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, if I could add, um, so I agree, I think it makes sense to make the prerequisites, like, uh, member McCarthy said, um, more consistent with the checklist and for us to revisit that and make sure that they are matching, um, in order to change that prerequisite list that he's referencing at the very end, um, that's actually part of the ordinance, so that would require city council approval to change the language there, so I think it makes more sense to, to make our checklist that we can administratively uh, modify, match, or mirror that prerequisite checklist that's from the actual zoning ordinance. Um, and I agree with all of you that making our checklist clearer and making the expectations, I guess, making it less ambiguous, uh, for, is just better for everyone, it's better for the applicants, better for staff and better for the ZBA, so um, with that in mind, we will definitely work on the form and, um, hopefully can come up with something that we're all happy with.
Great, that's what it's all about, communication, compromise and, and transparency, understanding of. Um, and in fairness to a lot of petitioners, in particular tonight, people, um, may be coming in front of a government board for the first time, um, and, and not be familiar with, uh, with the process and if we can provide, you know, some help along the way, I think that's what it's all about as well, so. Think we can move forward with, uh, with those recommendations. Does that satisfy the board? Any other comments on this topic? Great, always wonderful to have, uh, open communication to ensure we're on track. Um, so I'd like to move out of, uh, the business for landscaping plan discussion and move forward to the minutes for approval for February eighth, twenty twenty, let's strike that, February twenty twenty one. Uh, any members have any comments, concerns, edits, revisions? None being said, you have a motion for, uh, acceptance of the minutes.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion to accept the minutes for February eighth, twenty twenty one.
May I have a second?
Mark, three seconds, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Briere, may I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Uh, accept the minutes for February eighth, twenty twenty one.
Member Peck.
Um, approve the minutes.
Member Callahan.
Accept the minutes for February eighth, twenty twenty one.
Member McCarthy.
Accept the meeting minutes for, uh, February eighth, twenty twenty one.
Member Briere.
Acceptance.
Member ProCo.
Accept the meetings for February eighth, twenty twenty one.
Yeah, that's a right, so, and then accepted. Any other comments or communications by board members of DPD?
Mr. Chairman, I just had one, um, I noticed on the city council, um, meeting a couple of weeks ago that, um, the city planning department is redrafting the zoning bylaws, is that correct, Francesca?
Uh, we are looking to and, and starting the process of updating our master plan.
Okay, so is that, so the zoning bylaws themselves, i.e. the internal lighting and signage, that's not being touched, you know, at all?
Uh, we are working on, on, uh, re revamping ours sign ordinance in particular, that's still in the works, but the master plan is, is the visioning and planning process, it's not specifically, uh, to do with the zoning code.
Okay. Um, I was just wondering if it would make sense for anyone on the board to, um, offer opportunities for improvement, um, to specific things. I guess the signage, if that's in the works, maybe we could have a, have an opportunity for, to interact with that, just because so many of us have been on the board through these sign ordinance meetings and kind of wondering why it's even in front of us at all, in some cases.
Great point.
Anyway. That's all I had.
Great. Okay, great. Any other, uh, concerns or communications from any board members? None being said, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
I second, Mr. Chairman, George.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. George Proco, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone, continue to be safe and careful. Take care.
You too.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Nice.